Good morning, everyone. This is July 30th Board of Supervisors Budget Meeting. We'll get the ball rolling as we start with all meetings. We'll do an invocation. If they want to pray with me, please. But Father, we thank you for many blessings and opportunities you provide us each and every day. There are many needs out there, and we especially have to up the slave family and the Gaines family and to your loving grace be with them during their healing process. We ask that you be with those that are in our hearts, that they need the love and grace of your tender hands and be with the physicians who are tending to those as well. We ask that you guide us in this meeting that we make the right, careful, and considerate decisions on behalf of the folks here in Rankin County. We ask these things in Jesus' cross and we pray. Amen. All right, Ms. Oster, this is all yours.
All right. Do you want to go ahead and do your update real quick?
Sure. And I'll be done.
Okay.
Mike would like to just give y'all a quick update on the radio.
Absolutely. Have at it, Mike.
Last Friday morning, we were notified-
Where's Daniel? He's coming.
We were notified that our radio system was down. After some quick calling around, we ended up with three system technologists down here and an engineer from Motorola. Last August, you had a lightning strike at Monterey that took out a microwave. $157,000 insurance did cover that was to replace that microwave. It has went out, this same component on the brand-new system. This is the second time that it's went out. Fortunately, everything is covered under the warranty. We do not have a maintenance agreement on our microwave systems because they are so old. We do have one new one, and it is still under warranty. So that's why we haven't incurred any cost. The issues that we're coming into now, we have a half a link that is bad at Cato and a half a link that is bad at Langford.
Can you explain what that is?
It's got a transmit and a receive. We've got a ring that goes around. When you talk, it goes all the way around in a circle. And what's supposed to happen, when our site went down the other day, it's supposed to, when it goes around, says, "Hey, this thing isn't working. All right, fine, turn around and go the other direction."
Right.
It's not turning around and going the other direction. They're trying to figure out what's going on with that. We have since found out we've got two half-links that are bad right now. I've got to go see exactly what we're going to be able to do on that because that is not covered under any maintenance agreement whatsoever. We do have a entire link microwave system that is on order right now that we had in the budget, and I'm waiting on the engineer to get with me hopefully today to figure out where is the best place to put this. It has to go at Cato or it has to go at Langford. We've got to pick up where we left off.
Can we take that full link and half and put half of it and the other half-
No, sir. And the reason we can't do that is because there are two decades differences in the ages of them.
Well, can we take the other two halves and make a whole? I'm serious.
No, it's got to be, you've got one transmit and one receive. They have to communicate with each other.
You said we got half, we got a half-link out on which was the two older equipment.
Yes.
They're not compatible with each other?
Not going the direction they need to go.
Okay.
They can turn around and come back this way, but they can't go the direction that they need to go.
All right.
So it's a mess, and I'm waiting on the engineer to call me and actually come see me where he can explain this, where I can understand exactly what's going on with it. But I just wanted you guys to know that the system did not operate as it's supposed to. I have also found out that when the cutover was made from the old system to the new one that we're on right now, for whatever reason, there was never any environmental controls that were tested on it, which has come back to, it is, two weeks ago, it was bad. We had three air-conditioning units that went out. Only one of those, the environmental control worked, went to Schaumburg, said, "Hey, you got a high-temperature alarm." And they sent a tech out, walked in the door, boom, it's hot. Okay, let's call an air-conditioning person to come out here and fix it. I went ahead on my own and just went into, one of them was Cato. I walked in, it was 96 degrees in there. No alarms, nowhere, none whatsoever. Monterey, same thing. For whatever reason, the environmentals were not cut over, and I have finally got Motorola to admit to me that they did not do a system check on any environmentals. So they're working on that as we speak as well, so.
Well, Mike, you said we have a microwave that's under warranty that we got replaced.
Yes.
And we have one that was on order. What's the one on order for?
To replace another link. We had it in the budget to replace another link. Instead of coming to you guys and saying, "Hey, we need to upgrade all of these microwave links to the tune of about $3 million at one link," just take it on one at a time, one a year, and space it out. When, and the reason, and I asked Ms. Laura about this as well, the money is in the budget, and I wanted to put that back in there, and next year, if we don't have any kind of catastrophic failures and we're good to go, we still got that, then we can do another one this time next year at the end of the budget year.
I don't understand, man, because we just spent this $15 million.
Not on microwaves, you did not.
It was just radios and consoles.
Just radios. Yes. And that's why we couldn't get a, we couldn't get a maintenance agreement on the microwave system. I mean, we can, but it's a cost-plus, and it's cost-prohibitive to do it.
Yeah.
It's extremely high. Extremely high.
This piece of equipment you're talking about, we've had this tower, I don't know if it's the same actual piece of equipment, but I know we've had a tower down there that's been hit several times, Jared, in your district. What's the one is it that we've had to have multiple repairs on?
Probably the one at Monterey.
Yeah.
Is it there, is that it?
It'd be Monterey, I believe.
And Monterey's got a brand-new system in it.
I mean, we've had it just one-
No, it's Monterey. Yeah, Monterey.
We've had it done three or four times.
Uh-huh. I don't know why, it's like a bullseye on it. You're right.
I don't know. Pretty good ridge down there.
I can't answer that.
But now, I thought that the last time we put a, some type of device on-
There's arresters on all of them. Those arresters, again, are 20-plus years old. Now, there is a brand-new arrestor at Langford, a brand-new one there, and it's-
It would have been something newer, it had to be down south, because like I said, we've had it hit multiple times. It might have been Southwest, or it is Monterey?
I think it's Monterey.
Monterey's in the range.
I knew it was hit three times. So I would think we would have newer equipment on there.
Not, not a lightning arrestor unless it went bad.
Wait, did they get something, something hit there at Cleary once, Brian?
I don't recall.
I think in Monterey, when I, I don't remember it being hit that many times, but it has been problems, had problems.
Well, Bill Roberts can tell you. He's been out there doing all the work.
Absolutely.
The one on the water tower hasn't had a problem. You know, they put that, what like a, some type of antenna on that water tower helped too.
I guess it was the water tower that kept getting hit. Where is it at?
Didn't they put that on that, yeah, we did that water tower deal back several years ago, but I think it did get hit once too.
Yeah. Where is it?
Right there at the Pierce Road in Hickory Ridge.
Is that considered Monterey? Okay.
That'd be Southwest.
Then never mind, it's the water tower that kept getting hit.
Maybe that's it, Brian.
But there's a, I'll find out. I gave you the numbers in a day or two. I'll ride up to Langford and see. It's got a digital counter on it that tells how many times it's been struck by lightning. It's only been up there for a couple of months. Just out of curiosity.
This one, the water towers, is one of the highest points almost in Rock County.
Mike, what are you going to try to accomplish out of all this?
Well, right now, we only have a Band-Aid on our radio system. The entire, our entire system went down because it did not operate like it was supposed to. The only reason that we could talk a little bit is because our system, the way it was configured with the folks at Misswain and the contract that we wrote, it allowed us to reach the perimeter of county antennas, and that's how we were talking. We could not even page out a fire department in Rankin County. Could not do it. So fortunately, the e-dispatches worked really, really well. They were, because it's totally independent of our radio system, and it worked really well, and that's how we were paging our fire departments out. So it didn't work like it was supposed to. The reason it wouldn't back up is because of these two half-links that are bad. Marty was checking those. As a matter of fact, stopped in this morning to get the code numbers off of it, and he's calling Motorola as well. But we've got to figure out what's going on because it's not covered under the maintenance agreement, and that's what scares me to death. And I want to find out, we've got a brand-new microwave system. Is there any, just the exact question you were asking, is there any way that you could take this new microwave system that we're getting, that you're building right now, and make our issues go away? And that's the question, and that's from the system engineer that I can't answer that. So it's a, I mean, it is truly a critical, critical thing because it's just hinging. I mean, it may go at any second, I don't know.
But it just doesn't make a lot of sense that we had a national company come in here and offer us a solution to replace our 25-year-old system and only replace a portion of it.
Well, I can find out exactly what happened on that. I would make the, I would make the assumption that they offered a new microwave system as well, and at that point in time, you're probably looking at five, six, seven million dollars in addition to the radio system. I'll find out on that.
I'm pretty sure they did not.
If it was offered, I'll find out.
I don't think so.
You remember any of that, Brian? I know that, you know, what's another $5 million when you're throwing 15 at it?
I agree. I agree. So, and that's what I was telling y'all when we did the maintenance agreement. We've got a-
Fifty miles around.
It's a little over $9 million system that's operating on a 20-year-old microwave. So therein lies the problem. So I just wanted to get, just so you're abreast of it, know what's going on with the radio system, that we are having issues with it, and we are diligently working trying to get those fixed. If you guys don't mind, at some point this morning, we can do it now or whenever, again, in the budget already this year, we were able to acquire five of these, the Fibtechs, and these are for CPR. Our plan is to put these out at our more remote stations.
We've got one going to Starr, one Monterey, Shell Road, Langford, and Pillahatchie for all five of those, and we already currently have two that's deployed in Florence and Lake Harbor. So we'll have seven total.
Brian was able to find these, the two that are, the one at Lake Harbor and the one at Florence, those are manufactured by Lucas, who was the only game in town for a long time. Brian was able to find these considerably cheaper. A new Lucas is about $31,000 for one of those bags, and we were able to get these at a little touch over nine, I believe it was like $9200. It's going to make a huge, huge impact for our more rural, remote locations here in the county when we've got extended ambulance times, trying to get ambulances out there where you're doing CPR for 10, 15, 20, 25 minutes, and all the stats will show that you can't by yourself effectively do CPR more than about two or three minutes, and you are physically exhausted, you really are, especially if you don't have somebody to swap out with you, and you're not effective with it, your depth is not controlled, and it's just not, it's just not effective. So we have, we have used these across the county and actually saved some lives with these things, so they are, they are well, well worth the investment for our citizens here in Rankin County to be able to-
He wants to go to demonstrate again now.
Go ahead.
So like you were saying, this is the chest compression machine, so once we take it out of the bag, we bring this arm down on the center of the chest, the same place you'd be doing if you were doing hands CPR, and then you have a plug, and it does perfect chest compressions every time. So whereas a human would get tired, especially after 30 seconds, a minute, minute and a half, same compression depth every time. Now, you can still be breathing for them, using the bag for them, so this is, you give two breaths at this time, and then it goes right back into it. So we can transport a patient onto a stretcher, and then they can go to the hospital this way as well.
Some of our five citizens in the county, that's a mighty thin-
You would be surprised of our former chief at Lake Harbor, Robert, was a large guy, and Wicked, we put one on him.
I was just thinking the same thing.
He might have liked it, you know, with Travis.
I'm good. Steve was wanting to volunteer me, but I'm good.
You take somebody like Dean Scott, maybe not so much. Probably not going to fit on Dean, so.
There are a few individuals that you would have to do traditional CPR on, but this is just for cover, I would say, not necessarily.
But we would, if you guys don't mind, we would like to, to get a photo where you guys, we want to put this out on our social media and run it up to the newspaper, and I've actually got a news career that's going to come out on Wednesday and are going to do a story with us at the office on these, and this new technology we're bringing out here to the county, so.
I don't think any of us came ready for photos today, but I'm game with it if you are, if y'all want to do it.
I don't care, whatever y'all want to do.
We said to y'all, if you do, fine. If you don't, hey, let it rip.
I'm like, I'm like leaving here to go job.
Yeah, he got a T-shirt.
Man.
That's great.
There are no individuals that would like one photo.
I like trying to look like you can talk to the end, I guess.
I know Jessica wants to park.
Lay down up there.
Wait, how can Jessica be kind of like that?
Act like I know what I'm doing. All right. I'm three. One, two, three.
They got the inflation wrong.
Send me some wallets of fish.
We certainly appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
What else, Mr. Word? You got anything else for us?
Never ask that question, Mike. Never ask that question, Mike Word.
You'll learn that, don't ask any of them.
You don't ask that one, that question.
At this point, it's, we're good to go.
All right, Ms. Oster.
All right. In front of y'all this morning, you have two sets of papers. The first one is your budget review on your general county budget. We're going to go by each, go through each department just generally. We probably will have to have an executive session later on to discuss personnel, so we won't be that in-depth right now if y'all have any questions about that. Just note that in each department, I put in a $750 raise to the nearest depth, and of course, no raises for part-time or retirees, and then there may be some other salary adjustments that have been requested by various departments. You can go ahead and turn to the back, though. After many times of going through this and pulling out everything I know to pull out, we are still close to $300,000 deficit that I'm trying to reconcile.
Well, that's a whole lot better than what you said last time.
Yes, sir. It has dwindled down quite a bit.
Sure did.
Have you taken out all capital outlay?
No, I have not. I have taken out a large portion of it, but no, I have not taken out all capital outlay. In the board, you can see that it's been reduced by about almost $87,000. A lot of that is the legal fees that we talked about, that y'all probably believe will not have this upcoming year.
I only hope.
Yes, sir.
Make Slay laugh a little bit, you know?
Chancery clerk, there's a slight reduction there. I've gone back through these departments, and what I do is I do a four-year review over things like anything that I know that I can adjust, utilities, telephone, anything that I just see a little bit of fat in, I trim. Circuit clerk is up a little bit for office supplies and record books.
I see you took out $115,000 for buildings and grounds. Does that mean you're taking out the AC units?
No, I did not. There was an additional, not all of it, but there was an additional employee spot with all of its fringes that I was able to take out of there, so we just have the length of three gentlemen that are in there now. And then there were a few little capital things that we did take out, but we still have a healthy capital budget in there. But back up to the tax assessor, there is an increase in there. He did request an employee that is not in there, and then there were some raises given by virtue of schooling that three of them went to, that is contained within there. Your tax collector-
Hang on before you pass up a sector. In all fairness now, we're going to take out Johns, and we're going to leave in the tax collectors. We need to be able to explain to him why we did that, you know?
My understanding, the employee he wants is to replace Gloria, but she's not retiring until June of 2020.
Right. So Judy's are retiring this next June.
Right.
His is not going to retire until the following year.
All right. Now, I may be wrong about that, but that's what-
That's what I was told too. And that's all I can go by, that's, that's what I was told. The tax collector, there is three additional employees in there for the three spots that will be gone, well, actually, she has four that will be gone next June, but one already has a replacement that's being trained. So there will be a double up of these positions until that time.
For how long is that going to be?
Probably.
Will they start in January or?
Well, once she goes through the hiring process in October, you know, they might start November and work until the following June with people that are there, and then, and I made an adjustment for the fact that we will have those three gone in the last quarter, although I couldn't adjust all of it out, it's because several of them have their 240 hours that they will be paid out for, so that will be a healthy sum. In county administration, there is a decrease in that one. Our payroll clerk, we have gone from full-time position to a part-time position in there. Purchasing is just miscellaneous items, a little bit of capital outlay. Superintendent of Education, this was the last year that we paid the money on the telephone system to them, we've had it over two years, so now all we actually have there is pest control on the portion of the building that's still in the county name. Building and ground maintenance, like I said, there was a little bit, just some areas that I could shave, and there is an employee. They did have four slots, they're down to three now. Data processing, they also, I was able to take out, they had two extra spots that I took out in their personnel, but then we had to add back in some capital outlay for some equipment that will be needed this year. Veteran service officer is the same. Community development, it is just a small reduction there. Chance report, there's an increase there, that's in attending court and court reporter salaries. Circuit court, there is a little bit there. County court, an increase, and that's from attending court and an administrative raise. Youth court is, this one's a little bit tricky here on the youth court. You're going to see a large reduction, but if you look directly under it, there are two new departments associated with youth court. Because of the state, the way that they want these broken out, there has to be a separate department for your family drug treatment and a separate department for your juvenile drug treatment. So that money came out of youth court and went into these two budgets where a portion of several people's salaries paid from. Overall, the increase is around $50,000 for youth court, if you add these back to the minus there. It's still an increase.
It's an increase of $50,000?
Just if you take out what I could take out of youth court and add to these other departments, overall, it's about $50,000 increase because of fringes and-
Because they added another person?
No, sir, no, they didn't add anybody new. Just costs associated with, with the youth court. Lunacy court, I just took some miscellaneous deductions that we have used in a while. Justice court, we were able to trim that down. There was one slot that Jessica Neverfield said she would not need, so we took that out, and then we took some out of the public defender's position since y'all gave them two part-time public defenders for that department. The coroner does have some requests, but his still is an overall decrease. District attorney, a position is gone from there. County attorney is up a little bit, that's just due to the raises and to purse costs. Public defender, that's an increase due to the purse. Elections, they requested $100,000 in equipment, but I've already reduced it to 50. And then they did have an increase in their per dim amount. It went from $84 to 100, that started July 1.
Is the poll worker's salaries in here or?
Poll workers are included in there, yes.
There was concern, that was brought to my attention, of where they're doing absentees. Now, you have to run those in at the precinct at the end of the day, you know? And there's some concern about the age of the poll worker, being out there for at least 12 hours at that point and then having to work through that too. They may need some help. Has anybody else had that addressed to them at all? I mean, I see Craig agreed with me, but you know, anybody-
Is this state law, dear, to submit that request?
No request that I'm aware of. The only thing they did mention to us was from the transporter, and I don't know exactly if they've included that or they expect, because I don't have a cost on that, but we do have-
I've only heard about the transporter.
We're paying the max, right?
I think we're both talking about some difference from the transporter question.
Yeah, I know.
I was talking about the requirement, and I think it's Secretary of State requirement, selection law requirement, that the absentee ballots be, be physically located and counted at precinct that they relate to, and so I'm not exactly sure how they, how they deal with that.
Well, because right now, if I voted absentee and I changed my mind on the day of election, I could go vote on the day of election, and then that negates the absentee, but I have, you know, it has to, they got to take me out of the absentee, so that's why they're doing it at the end of the day. So, you know, the point is, you've just got some 70 and 80-year-old people who are handling this thing, and they're there at 6:30, and you're going to potentially stretch them on out to around even later than where they are now. I mean, it's about personnel costs, that's where I'm getting with it.
Oh, I see.
You know, so that potential, we may get hit for additional requests, but we'll just handle that, I guess, when the time comes.
So what are we, what do we pay poll workers? They're paid-
The managers of the-
By the election, it's 125 dollars.
A hundred for the poll worker. Then if they transport, there's an additional $10 each way, and then they get paid for attending class. They're allowed so many classes that they-
That's maximum. I mean, that, we're paying what the, basically, as much as statute allows.
But one thing, we got a reduction, because one guy was doing all the transport, wasn't it?
Now, that's what they requested, and they, they would like for us to do to that.
Yeah, well, one guy does all the transport to save money on it.
So Friday, Leslie got me, Leslie Lewis got me some documentation. I haven't gotten with Ms. Laura to look at, to look that over, and I haven't even looked it over yet, but apparently there are, some of the larger counties have moved to this minimalist approach to it, where they, where they essentially contract with two or three transporters who are responsible for delivering all of the equipment to the precincts. So Soto County's doing, Heinz County has contracted with ESNS to provide that.
Thor, yeah.
Jackson County, Harrison County, these are, these are the larger counties, and that's what they're doing, and so I've got relationships with each of those board lawyers. I'm going to try to find out precisely how they did that.
But my question was poll workers individually. Are we paying them the max we can pay them?
Okay.
Well, if we're paying, and we're paying by the election too, so it's not like an hourly kind of thing, so let's just move on. I'm wasting time.
Well, it would hurt to actually maybe some legislation going this next year to try to get that increased.
It's, it's actually structured similarly to the way that you guys made, in that it's by county population.
Oh, really?
So the larger the county population, the greater the per dim amount that's available to both the election commissioners and the workers, and we've maxed it out, and the next breakpoint, Jay, is, I want to say, in the neighborhood of 190,000 to 200,000 population. So we're a long way away from that. I don't see us getting to the max or any reasonable pay.
All right, Ms. Oster, keep moving.
All right. In the Sheriff's Department, we have almost $307,000 increase that's due to tires, UPS software is included in there. Jail operations, 458, that's seven new jailers for our misdemeanor facility that will be opening in the spring. Juvenile justice, about 33,000, that's raises and purses, just a few other things. EMS is the same. Ambulance service, we had allocated 150,000 in there, we gave them 100 in their allocation, so I was able to cut out the 50 there. Our EMS OF branch should stay about the same. EOC, Mike had already done some adjustments, and he had taken out some money there. Constables is up 102, but now that money comes back in on the receipt side, so that's not an addition that's going to hurt us any in our, in our money here that we're talking Game warden, there was some capital outlay that's been in there for several years, it was not spent, I took that out.
Soon as we take it out, they're going to come here and ask for it.
It's been in there two, three years.
They've not used it.
Well, it's once every blue moon, I guess, they'll come ask or something.
Well, if they did, we could-
It's going to be like night vision, go stuff like-
It's gonna be like night vision gov, stuff like that. If they come ask for it, just let me buy it and assign it to them. Cause I say something I can easily buy legally with drug money.
Our EMA bonus money, Mike is spending all that, so there should be zero at the end of the year. The safe room is up a little bit, thirty thousand. We have no survey or public health. The reason that highlighted is I have had no request from them yet, so I've left that the same as it was last year. Regen aid should be the same. Welfare administration is the same. Council on Aging is the same. Human resource is up a little bit. Most of that's in utilities, but they did request an increase in their allocation of four thousand six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And that's just what we give to them as an allocation. I'm seeing, okay. Libraries, this is not the library millage. This is the portion that is basically just utilities, and we get a percentage of that back, comes in on the receipt side. Recreation grant, y'all had increased during the year. Soil conservation, the same. Extension's up by fifteen hundred. The livestock, I've gone through there and cut out a little bit that I could. We've cut out six thousand from there. Beaver control would be the same if we enter into that this year. And then, the rest is the same.
Can I ask you a question about the beaver control?
Yes, sir.
What is it that Scott, I mean, I know the guy, Scott Shepard would, what is he doing that Kenny wasn't? Or was, I mean, cause we did Kenny on a case by case.
With his affiliation with USDA, Steve, we don't have to worry about public, private property at all. If it's a beaver issue.
I remembered that.
Call Scott, Scott has jurisdictional authority under his attachment to USDA through Avis State. Kenny, I think, is a county employee, I guess?
No, contract.
But because he was in the county, he had to be county.
He cannot go on private property on our behalf. Scott, it's all bets are off, because he has jurisdictional under the Fed, under his mandate under the Fed, through this program. As long as we're using this program, he can go anywhere he needs to go. The seventy-five hundred is a flat fee to us. If we use him a hundred and sixty times in the year, that's what we pay. If we use him once, that's what we pay.
We were out of it forever.
Yes, sir.
We're back in it, yeah. We were in it, out of it, yeah.
What we found is that there were occasions where we clearly see damaged public property, which would allow us to use Kenny. But there are so many of those situations, Steve, where you really can't find any sort of connection to a, to a publicly controlled or maintained area. You just got a constituent who says, "I'm getting water all over me," and.
That's voiced.
Yes, and it's in the back, and it's not anywhere near an access, a public access room. You won't try to help them if you can. So, we jump back in to get that done. They graciously allowed us to come in midstream, of course, we have to pay them for the full year. But.
They're gracious.
This time, we will hit it on the, on the actual start date and have availability for the full year.
There was some issue one time that, like, I thought it was going away.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yes.
You're right, and the legislature brought it.
They funded it again?
Well, they upped the ante on this. It'd be forty-five hundred dollars for us to participate.
Right.
They were losing money handling this, so they upped it to seventy-five hundred. We got offended by that and dropped out.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Oster, the multipurpose, this facility, the two-seventy-one, does that take in, offset the income we get off that? Or is that just the gross expenses?
That's just the gross expenses. Our income has increased significantly. I don't know what it is, I did not pull that for today. I can pull it for you and see, but it has increased a good bit.
I would, I would love to see us try to put together a little PR piece of the paper, kind of what we have done, what we have spent, how now, the fact that we're, you know, have reworked and we're making money, and not making money, but we're increasing revenues to the county and stuff, so that maybe we could convince Chuck, when he's got a lull in his thing, he can do a little puff piece as far as.
Just a rough, regular bottom line, just don't bring yourself all around the one-third or the four-fifths we do, you know, that we're doing on that facility.
Of course, then we'll get accused of overextending, and we should be giving these things and not charging these people these things, so I know it'll cut both ways, but.
Putting all that money back in that facility.
Yeah. I'd like to hear what Whataburger, not Whataburger, but Backyard Burger is doing too.
You know, I forgot to tell y'all, I did. But I think though, all the complaints came from the same home, or very, maybe three homes. But how bad the food was and how expensive it was, so I went over there and ate. And I think a hamburger was like three dollars. And, I mean.
I, I went there one day too and saw the prices, and they didn't really jump out at me any more than any other special concession or vendor, you know?
I've been to places like that.
That's in the past.
It'd be seven, eight dollars, you know, just because of their location. But I, I didn't, I thought the food was good, and the prices were right.
There must have been some other reason for complaints, Steve. Must not have really been that quality of problem.
Figure it out.
Must have been something.
It'll come to. That same day, there was just racing cane, because two of the fans were not working, and if they paid as much as they did for that building, those fans. I talked with Brian's man that was down there and asked him what would it take? He said, "We just turn them on." But, but the very people who was complaining had asked for them to be turned off, cause it drives the dirt out too fast and messes up their electrolyte.
Can't win, can you?
And I thought, boy, that's ballsy. You know, they didn't know, I guess, that I'd go ask or something.
All right, already, the next one is our debt service. That money has been brought in, in the receipt by, in bringing that strong cash, that's the only place there is, is coming from cash into our receipts in order to meet that debt there. Our inter-fund transfers to Blue Cross, I've taken it out this year. We haven't had to use it, we've had a good year.
Wow.
A very good year, and that's what I said, Jay. So, I'm crossing my fingers for next year that I've taken it out in order to help, but you can see, I'm still about three hundred thousand off. I'm, I'm certainly to figure out where I can take this from.
I have an idea.
Well, one thing I can do, that I forget about.
I know where he's headed.
One, one thing that I can do, this is not something I like doing at all, but we are bringing, like I said, the two-hundred-and-fifty over from cash. Judy's three employees with their fringes are gonna total about a hundred and twenty thousand. That will be a one-time expense, because when the others are gone next year, they'll slip, slip into that salary spot. So if I bring that in, I'm, I'm down to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, somewhere in there. Now, I gotta figure out where to get that from.
I don't have a problem doing that, cause they're all one-time expenses, you know, after a transition, you know?
Right, that is a one-time.
Well, are we still?
Another hundred.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Um, the, the money that we're paying out for the, I guess, the flood study and all that flood stuff, and the money we're paying for the lobbyist, is that still in there?
No, sir, the lobbyist portion was in the board, I took that out. The study for the drainage is in bridge, that's not in general county.
Okay, but I don't, I don't see where we're getting our bank or butt there.
The, the legal fees associated with the flood part of the deal is tied to litigation, to active litigation matters. So, only the lobbying is obligated, only the lobbying had a legal fee component with it. And y'all releasing that is, is, what is that, seventy, seventy-five-ish? That's where you're seeing.
Like, so much a month, yeah.
And then, I took out a little bit more, because we.
Oh, we released that? Yeah.
Well, not yet, we will in October.
Well, and just like, well, I mean, you said it comes out of the road and bridge, but that's like a hundred and, I mean, I understand it's not in this number here. That's like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, isn't it?
Well, it was three-something for the study, the total study to be done, yeah.
And that's a lot of, that's a lot of, uh.
Are we talking about the Wyngman Study?
Yeah.
Then there was additional, like fifty thousand a year, maybe, or twenty thousand a year?
It's, it's in the neighborhood.
Afterwards, or continuing, uh.
I don't know, that's, that's a lot.
It's in the neighborhood of three.
That's a lot of culverts and things he could have used at this point. I mean, I, I don't see, honestly, that, I don't see that us getting anything there. I mean, what they went over with me, I could have told, I told, I told them everything that they did. I mean, these are all the streams and everything, but there's no.
Well, this is just beginning.
I was hoping that they would take, well, cause you're right, we've given them everything they got.
Yeah, I said, sure, Indian Creek, this is it. Staines Creek.
Take that and give us.
Yeah, so what's, what's gonna happen with that is, again, and this is subject to further refinement in front of you guys, I'm not trying to speak on anybody's behalf. I'm just telling you what my observation is and what I understand. How, how they are going to put that data together and the recommendation they make will be used or utilizable by this board out into the future for federal grant programs, for potential core projects, or potential, in our CS projects. It's the kind of study and compilation of data that you have to have on the front end. We're seeing this consistently, especially as federal agencies. When you go ask, first question is, what can y'all share with us about your issue? What sort of studies have you done? So, I think there's value in it for the long term. The hard part is obviously the requirement that there's gonna have to be some patience to figure out how to navigate through these federal programs.
Yeah, that's the thing.
To permit that it's some useful.
I, I understand you studying, having it together, but where does it stop that we just keep paying for a lot of studying?
Yeah.
And, and that's basically where we are. And like Steve said, and I mean, most, all of you the same way, I'm sure. You know, Richmond Creek is, is a problem up here, and these little creeks run into it, Staines Creek and Indians Creek, and, yeah, I showed them every one of those. This is where it runs, and they, they all bring them out, but it'll head out there, and it's the same thing we, we showed them. So, I understand by having them, because they're the engineer, they give us something to work with. But for us to keep pulling money out that we need, I mean, for the road and bridge, where, where we used it, and we ran and tapped well this time. I just, you know, where does it, I guess, where does it stop? We just keep paying twenty thousand or plus for paying for them to have, be in Washington? For, for what reason? Once we get this study set done, I guess, well.
I guess it depends on what our desire is moving forward.
Yeah.
If we intend to, you know, do something about our stormwater drainage issues, you know?
I understand, yeah.
We've got a lot of problems that still, you know, that need to be addressed.
Yeah, I, I, I see, but, you know, they, when they came in here and did the presentation, we asked them, had they got any of this kind of money? And they kinda stepped back, said, "We've got it for wastewater." They didn't get, you know, so I mean, have the study and have it there, it's kinda like having the right-of-way for a project, that's important, I understand. So what you're saying, have, have the design, the right-of-way sitting there, having a study there, but where do we, I don't know how much, keep just dipping in there.
I don't think they're finished, for one, you know? But it was, that was a one-time expenditure, but like I said, it's ongoing for efforts going toward Washington and trying to help seek some.
They're gonna make it look like it's, you'll always hear, "We, we, we're close." So anyway, I just, somewhere, somewhere it's got either ante up or in, in my opinion.
What else, Ms. Oster?
But it's not affecting the budget, that's what my question was.
Yeah.
Um, pulling Judy's amount out of cash that leaves us about a hundred and seventy-five, and I hate to balance on the back of any one department.
Go ahead, go ahead and do it.
Well, I, I could do it off of IT, the servers that we, they said that we're going to need this next year, that will be a one-time expense for about seven years. They said our last server's lasted us about seven years, so that's two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand. I could pull out of there, and at the time he's ready to purchase them, he could come before you. Just because we say we're taking it out of cash, it might actually not, our revenues might exceed what's anticipated, so it might not look as detrimental at the end of the year as we think it is by taking these things, one-time things.
Let's just, let's just raise the fees, the multipurpose facility, Mike, make up the difference there.
Laura, I've got a question, this is an accounting question. On the constables, we're showing a hundred and two, five, a hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars increase. And that, but it's really.
It's not, what happened is, there's a constable fund out there, and this is where when Jessica gives us the money, where they get, where we collect on everything they served, it all goes into this fund. Well, they used to be paid out of that fund when they were paid through claims. Now that they're paid by AW two through payroll, they're paying out of this department. So the money that comes into our constable fund, we bring it over to take care of their salaries and fringes. Twice a year, maybe, you know, I remember I pull it out, at least before the end of the year, we pull it out. So it's a receipt coming in, it, it doesn't affect our ultimate cash here. Nothing other than what's in their department that's always there, such as conferences they go to, uniform, money that's in there, any capital outlay that's in there. That is all on the county side.
But that does have to be shown that way.
Yes, sir.
Because it's.
Right, but it's coming in on the receipt side, and it does show that way. And then, you know, last year, we didn't have a constable for the majority of the year until he was elected in November. So that's why his money that's now anticipated to go in there is, is reflected in the receipt.
That cover that, what is it, eighteen hundred, they get, right?
That, that's in there too. Well, that's on the county side, but that's also in there.
That's, okay.
Yes. Yes, and it covers the capitals.
One I never understood.
And engages and different things like that, that they request in capital. Uh, but that's just a thought of how I can balance this. But in a few minutes, we'll go into executives, so I can tell you some of the department requests that are in there, that if y'all want to take care of.
So you said we take Judy's out and just do it out of cash? How much of that leave us?
About a hundred and seventy-five-ish, somewhere in there.
And then you take out a server or something.
And then, that would, I, I said I could pull it out, I'm not trying to slide IT, I just know that that particular large capital project is a one-time, that's good for five to seven years. So I thought it might be an appropriate way to.
Steve, you never said which place you would cut, though.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I spoke of.
Let's just keep them. We're, we're getting close. I'm, that's the default, that's the way that we get, nothing else works.
So, that, that's the general county. The other page that I've given you is your miscellaneous funds review. Most of those are like our reappraisal and mapping. That money is what we transfer after we get the letter from the state saying we can now spend our one mil money, that's transferred into the general county. State drug money, that's just what the sheriff brings in, what they allocate for the next year. Federal drug fund, right now, at present time, we have no cash balance in there, that has been spent. There's several other funds that are money that's brought in, the special assessment supplement fund, and then the special assessment criminal. Those are both things that the sheriff can spend for particular items. Our nine-one-one is an increase of about thirty-four thousand this year. Some miscellaneous increases, and we are using cash reserve to meet those, all those things in that budget. The law library, we bring those funds in, and it strictly has to be spent for the law library, and that's anticipated what was been this year. Sanitation and waste removal, that's our, our solid waste that's in Judy's office when we build. Our constituents is going up by about twenty-two thousand this year. We are still in the black, in that fund, yes.
Is that the, the increase in the CPI?
Does it include that?
Yeah.
Um, I try to anticipate what we're going to spend based on that.
You have salaries and herds.
How many households will be added?
Oh, that's from where we pay her, or elected?
Right, and where we have several employees over there that we pay.
They're locked in to a, a max on CPI in the contract. And so, they can't increase above certain max, I wanna say, they can't go above twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent. So, we, we could anticipate a request for that, maximum on the health. Yeah, we can do that, but I think they're maxed out as one and a half. It may be two, but I think it's one and a half. It may be two, but I think it's one and a half.
Um, in our volunteer fire department, we have a reduction there, we do have rain golf money coming in, there are some fire trucks anticipated. I did take out the volunteer fire personnel, that's, and there's some other things in there, but you know, we had put in there for, um, some paid volunteer, not volunteer, it sounds stupid, paid volunteers, but some paid firemen within our department. That's been in there two years, has not been used, so I pulled that out.
Yeah.
Um, code enforcement, the same, um, grand golf, that's just, um, an estimate of an increase that we might get, and that's what we're gonna transfer out for two fire trucks. Uh, inmate commissary fund, that's, uh, used for jam items. The two big tickets on this budget are gonna be your road maintenance and you stick that, um, and your, your bridge. Uh, road maintenance, Mike and I worked diligently last Friday afternoon trying to get it back in balance. He said he was gonna blame me for all the cuts and for not having enough money, so I'm just gonna go ahead and put that out there on the table before he can get to it. Um, there is an increase of four hundred and thirty-three, uh, five. Uh, this does include bringing two and a half million out of cash, um, to meet the budget. And, um, our receipts are twelve million fifty-seven thousand dollars, this does not include-
Twelve million, how much?
Huh?
Twelve million, what?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven thousand.
It says right there, to the right.
This does not include Holly Beach nor the spillway turn lane. Um, bridge.
Well, that money, uh, spillway turn lane, that's, isn't that a, a grant, I mean, a-
It's a state aid deal.
Yeah.
But the county is gonna have-
We still gonna have twenty percent.
We have some twenty percent in it.
Right, right, but I mean, we're still-
Yes, but we will have twenty, doesn't include whatever our twenty percent is.
But I don't want that figure either.
I don't think it's that, what's the total, what's the cost?
I, I don't know yet.
Okay.
Hopefully the day I'm-
That meeting's today at three.
Yeah, I don't think it's that, I don't think it's gonna be that bad.
One, one, right, what time is that meeting, one, three, two, four?
I mean, if it's like any other job, I mean, you talk about probably me, two, me and three, all that job.
That was not what was projected when they, when we went with that job, and it could be there now.
I don't think so either.
It was like, like three hundreds, four hundreds for each one, maybe?
It may be, it may be that last high.
I don't, I don't remember it being way that high.
I don't either.
I, I don't, but I mean, I, I just kinda-
Two projects or just one project?
No, that was-
One turnkey.
Two projects, wasn't it? I think they were both around three hundred dollars.
Two.
I know he's talking about all the red light system right there, it spillway and north shore. When you probably look in their couple of files and just do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but was that included initially?
I think so, yes.
The, the plant, the plant, the plan that-
This is the money you got from CNPD.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the plant, the plant, well, the plant, the plan hadn't changed, there hadn't been any kind of reworking in the plan.
Okay, well, I just make it up, I don't remember. I knew, that's the only place qualified, as I was telling you.
Is it possible that we said the same thing, three hundred thousand would be reflected with our percentage?
Oh, my, you qualify for everything coming through there.
So our use is gonna be one five, our share of that would be-
We're saying that we don't think the project is gonna be one five.
I got you, all right, I'm just curious.
I, I was, I was of the understanding of what, what Slay's saying, that the project, our share of it was gonna be in the three hundred thousand on a range.
My fault.
I don't think, I don't remember it being that big when I saw those-
Twelve million that we receive in, that's part of the additional two and a half million we put in?
The two and a half comes out of cash.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we have ad valorem for twelve million.
And other receipts, yes.
Is there any thing out there at all that suggests that counties are gonna get any money out of the oil spill? What, eight billion dollars that the state's gonna get?
I'm, I'm not hearing anything, Steve, but, yeah, the talk that I'm hearing is that the coast counties are gonna just dive the ditch to make sure they get the line here.
Oh, yeah.
I, I just don't, how far north the line's gonna go, uh, or how they're gonna try to get away with not sharing it statewide. I, I don't know, but I'm hearing that the coast counties are just ready to go to war to make sure that the line share stays down there.
They hadn't elected a governor since before the Civil War, I don't think.
They had a bunch of them running.
They had a bunch of them running, so.
Right.
I'm not optimistic that's getting any money from state.
No, me either.
Online sales tax, any of that so-called, you know.
That deal, you sent that resolution yesterday, are they already, has the legislature already passed a bill to start collecting, uh, taxes on-
Some do it voluntarily, uh, Amazon and, yeah, some of the big ones go ahead and do it.
Supreme Court case, I don't know that there was gonna be a requirement of any specific legislation with respect to collecting it, Jay. They just turned it over to State Tax Commission, follow the Supreme Court case and start getting, start taxing or collecting that use tax. They characterize it as a use tax specifically, so that they don't have to share it with any municipality, that's my opinion.
I, I just wanna make sure that we weren't in part, you know, that by doing that resolution saying, we support them going out and starting this.
That's right.
If they already collecting, I'm finding us getting our share, but-
That, that's where we are, Jay. The US Supreme Court said recently, you are authorized, even though there's no brick and mortar, you are authorized to collect a tax for any of those transactions.
Did you know there's some, uh, Naco, some of these, uh, other, um, states? I'm thinking Louisiana might be one, I can't remember exactly, but they get a percent of sales tax of, of, um, especially if you got a, like we have businesses outside of a municipality, they get, they get a portion.
Right. Yeah.
Several of them did, they were like, y'all don't get that, nothing, nothing.
What else, Ms. Oster?
Well, the, the bridge, um, we are bringing forward, you can see the increase is a million, a little over a million, and we're bringing that a hun- a million eight hundred thousand out of cash is coming over to balance that out. That does not include, include the Andrew Chapel box culverts. That would be, most of that is for your study that's being done and for, um, just other items. And, you know, two years ago, we cut the bridge from two point five oh down to two, because that money went over into our bond. So we've been pulling out of cash some.
So we know already we're gonna take a million out next year?
Because of the, the, to fund that study and, um, just other items that are in there.
What, what study?
The study, the study's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so you're, you're still off million five out there somewhere.
What else is in there, Mike, that we've got that's-
We got the box over from Andrew Chapel.
They're not in there, or did we put, we didn't put him in there.
I just, I, I know where someone was going, I just wondered about the study.
Yeah, Obrog, Amigant Four is in there.
What?
Amigant Four is in there, the Obrog.
Oh, that'll be out this year, won't it?
Not all of it, no. In fact, none of it might hit the actual payment, we're in August already.
It's gonna be done in two months.
But payments don't always follow until-
Right.
I think, what was it, December twenty, fifteenth, fall?
August, yeah.
Yeah, see, by the time we get a bill in on that, it'll probably hit the next-
Probably will.
Okay.
Takes budget time, I think a year like I was.
That's a great expenditure there, so, yeah, move it on.
Don't wanna discuss that.
The rest of these are basically funds that their revenue is, is exactly, you know, for what, what it's for, it can't be moved anywhere else. If you'll come down here, um, down to, uh, fourth from the bottom, CMRLS, our library system, they did request a million, uh, eight ninety-eight. It's only gonna generate a million eight.
Right, where?
So they're, they're just gonna get what it generates, we're not gonna go up any on that village to, uh, accommodate that. The rest are our five districts, the money comes in, the money goes out.
So you taking off the one seventy-two, or that is the increase, but the ad valorem paid for that?
That is, that is the increase, whatever the ad valorem will get, but that is, um, the rest of them are money in, money out. I have, um, made sure that that eight hundred thousand that we were gonna budget for Hines is not in there, that it was paid this last time.
Yeah.
There is no increase here in any kind of, um, village, it's just whatever the ad valorem this year is bringing in.
Yeah.
Well, um, on the, the library, you know, there's always been questions, I think we cleared that up, I just wanna ask, that what we pay, we're not subsidizing some of these others, you know, one time-
Huh?
Absolutely we are.
Well, I think we are, but they tried to say we weren't.
Well, let's just say we pay the line share of it.
Yes, for the largest county, we pay the largest amount.
Yeah, I think that was a discussion we had one time, being able to see, actually, as, as a possible, we need to cut back. Is what's covered our libraries instead of the whole other counties.
It wouldn't make our costs go down any.
Why?
Because we're still paying for our people.
Yeah, but I mean, we're paying, does it take, does it take that much to pay for our people? I guess it's a question.
That I don't, that I don't know.
Yeah. I, I know it came up, uh, several years ago.
I will contact Mara and ask her to give me a breakdown of just all of ranking counties' costs.
I think we did that before, when we found out that it was, we weren't really subsidizing like we thought.
I mean, like, they're, they're, yeah, they're paying for their, um, people and as far as their employees
Right.
and their buildings where they have the libraries in other counties, but, but we probably pay for more of the books and, you know, equipment, technology and all that.
Well, I mean, we got, if they got one library and we got the many that we have, then I just wanna make sure that ours is not paying, subsidizing down, down there, that county that can't, maybe don't, done budget enough to pay their employees. And I just didn't know, I know we talked about this all, what, six years ago, five years ago, something, so it's probably, probably the same.
You were up here and you did, they came in and gave us a breakdown.
Right, they did, and it was, it's probably fine, it just, that just looks like a lot when you see that.
Oh, and going back real quickly to the road, that does include the lease payment, next year's lease payment on the new facility. Yes.
It does include.
It does include.
And how long do we, uh, have to pay a lease, I mean, years?
Well, it's fifteen, it was a fifteen-year lease, but you can pay it after that at any time if you want to. Fifteen-year note, lease note.
Typically, you've structured a lease to correspond to the note amortization. If you pay the note off, you can terminate the lease and the building is ours.
Right.
But is there a time period?
It, it's, it's, in accordance with the note, the lease is really not an issue, Jay, it's just a vehicle by which we're making a payment on behalf of CNPDD. There are gonna be the obligation on the note, so we're, we're just simply corresponding the lease to the note. Once, when the note goes away, the lease can go away. You've got to get it timed correctly, if, on the off chance that, that we're gonna have to use the full fifteen-year amortization to pay the note off. So you want your lease to be at least fifteen years to time it with the note.
Well, I understand that, but I thought that there was some type of law that required us to do it for a certain period of time, like, we couldn't turn around and pay it off next year.
Yes, we could, there's no prepaid, well, let me take that back, I, I will make sure, I'm clear, I think there is a, a period, like a two years maybe?
We can't? It's a two-year thing.
Two years, I think it's two years.
Where, where there, there would be some sort of penalty to it early paid off.
Yeah.
And that's so they get their, uh, from, you gotta get the right, the cost of transactions gotta be recovered. So, we gotta pay at least a couple of years' worth of interest, but after that, there is no penalty.
That's my thought.
Moving on, Ms. Oster.
Are y'all ready to go into executive?
If you're, if we're done with everything else, we can. Is there a need, I hear a motion to go-
Some moves.
Are we gonna do everything?
Yes, we have.
To discuss.
This will be for personnel, it will be for, uh, the tax assessors department, deputy clerk, tax collector deputy clerk, county administrator department, circuit court county court administrator and shared law clerk, justice court, um, justice court clerk, coroner, deputy coroners, public defender, and I believe that is it.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Says Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the need to discuss personnel by Mr. Morrison? Second by Mr. Cross, any discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Please vacate the room if you are no longer needed, thank you.